A meeting will be called to order and we'll get a roll call from the recording clerk.
Sarah Wallen-Daly.
Here.
John Elliott.
Here.
Richard Tiroff.
Here.
Brad Bennington.
Yep.
Tom Levinino.
Present. Good, this is a scheduled work session for the Planning Commission. So I'm glad there's one member of the public and presenters, I guess, even today. So we'll get right into it. Mainly, we're going to look at some, two items here. First one will be the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities, acronym C F E C. And Mike Brinkley, that, right there, thank you. He's the AICP City of Medford Planning Director.
Good morning, Commissioners, Ted Soak Development Services Director. I just wanted to introduce Matt. Matt is the Community Development Director for the City of Medford and a very, very esteemed colleague in the planning world from around the state. I mentioned to him this morning that he's the planning guru and I just happen to have a planning division under my wing in Development Services. So I just wanted to give you the background on that. Medford is very active in the CFEC.
Mr. Director, is your mic on?
No lights.
About that.
There you go.
I'll put it closer. I have not got any more soft spoken than I have always been, Brad. With that, I wanted to come up here, why I'm sitting in the audience, I feel Matt's credentials. I'd like to listen to his presentation and not be up on dais. But privileged to have him here today and talk about CFEC and I'll leave it at that. I just wanted to, it's a, it's very nice that he came over and talked to us about it today. So that's all.
All right, good morning Commissioners. Thanks for having me this morning to talk about Climate Friendly Equitable Communities. And Matt Brinkley, Planning Director, City of Medford. And happy to make the long trip from across the street anytime something like this comes up and talk about things that, in this case, probably only indirectly affect the county, but could have significant indirect impacts on the county. So we'll talk about that. We'll talk about what Climate Friendly Equitable Communities is, what it isn't, the little parts of it, and again, how it affects us. And then I'll update you on the lawsuit that we're currently involved in with the state of Oregon, along with several other cities in one county to oppose the implementation of Climate Friendly Equitable Communities. And I'll just answer questions. This is an open kind of presentation, so if you have questions as I'm presenting, please, you know, feel free to stop me and ask and I'll try to answer it.
Did you say oppose the implementation or the elimination of Climate Friendly?
So oppose the implementation of the rule.
Okay, thank you.
And I can get into the details on that when we get down there. So, okay. With that, so what is Climate Friendly Equitable Communities? If you break up the parts of the name, kind of explains what it is. It's supposed to be climate friendly and it's supposed to be equitable. It's questionable, in my opinion, whether or not it can achieve either one of those goals. And I'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. One of the important things, I think, to understand about CFEC is it is not legislation. It's an administrative rule. It was not legislated by the Legislative Assembly. It was done under the auspices of an executive order, Executive Order 2004. And this was done as a rulemaking process by the Department of Land Conservation and Development, D L C D, working as staff to the Land Conservation Development Commission. So ultimately, the L C D C, as you know, they approve these rules. And so this was not legislated. I think it's important for everybody to understand that. As opposed to other land use regulations that are in state administrative rule that have been legislated. So we had House Bill 2001 several years ago. It changed the way that we do zoning for single-family and multifamily housing primarily in cities. And then that was then turned into administrative rule. So this is a little bit different. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Matt, can I jump in? We've got a little bit of history, so.
Yeah.
You know that I also served with the Oregon Home Builders Association and we were one of the initiating parties on the lawsuit that you mentioned. So this is just me agreeing with you. And it's very, very important for everyone to understand that not only is this not legislative, it wasn't done on a citizen's initiative either. So this, again, this is one of 67 executive orders that the governor issued in 2020. It was issued in March of 2020. This particular executive order was issued to, as you said, D L C D or L C D C. And it was administrative in nature. In other words, this is literally the governor directing a state agency to do X, X, Y, and Z. And gave the agency a certain amount of time to do this rulemaking. Then the rulemaking came directly from D L C D to the jurisdictions that are affected, including the jurisdiction that you represent for the City of Medford. So this is just me saying, I agree with you 100% what you just said. But it's important for everyone watching this presentation to understand this has never been done before where a governor, a sitting governor directs an Oregon state agency to take an action that has the impact of legislation. Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, I mean, this really is broad, just comprehensive change to the way that we do transportation planning. I'll get to that in just a minute. But it affects only metro cities. So those are cities that are kind of in these regions that are more urban. So for example, obviously Portland Metro, Eugene, Salem, places like that, you would expect, you know, to fall within that definition. Roseburg is not one of the cities that's affected. They're not affected by this. Bend is affected, but Redmond is not because of the way that those boundaries. And of course, everybody here in the Rogue Valley, including Grants Pass, which is one of the other parties to the lawsuit opposing implementation of CFEC, is also then included in, or affected by the rule. And there are different ways that different cities of different sizes are affected by the rule. The larger the city is, the more the rules affect you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Sounds like the standard for inclusion is population within a given area, not necessarily the area of the city in particular. But, you know, you're talking about Josephine and Jackson Counties. There must be some population factor that puts both Grants Pass and Medford in this boat.
So that's a good way to look at it because it is based on your inclusion in a metropolitan planning organization. So we have R V M P O here, the Rogue Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is, you know, it's a transportation planning sort of organization where all of the communities get together along with ODOT federal highways and work on transportation projects and funding. If you're within one of those organizations, then chances are, you know, that you are affected by the rule. So that's basically, that's the simplest way, I think, I can explain how it works. So.
Thanks.
Yep. So the rule affects a broad range of things. It is technically a part of Administrative Rule 66012, which is the transportation planning rule, which all of you in this room have had experience with. You had a T S P that got, a new T S P that got approved a couple of years ago, I think, which is a good thing because new T S Ps are going to be done differently. I'll talk about that more because of this rule. But Division 12 is really about transportation planning. It really hasn't been as much about land use planning because it is the transportation planning rule. That's all changed now. So this is the first time in rulemaking for the transportation planning rule that the rule has been extended to address land use planning and in ways that are very significant. So before I get into each one of those sections, or we'll get into each one of those sections now. I'll go through all nine sections briefly. They're very large. So we've always had Division 12, or we've had Division 12 for a long time now. It has gotten much, much larger. I think everybody would agree with that, whatever side of the issue you're on, and has become much more complicated. I think everybody would agree with that too. Maybe not, but I think it's, I think it's pretty easy to make that statement. So the first few sections of Division 12 now lay out a lot of the processes that are going to be used for transportation planning moving forward. And I think the most significant part of this, or the thing that's really important and affects us the most, is that we are now, we will have to measure our impacts in vehicle miles traveled per capita. And the rule requires that we actually reduce vehicle miles traveled per capita. So that has huge implications for transportation projects moving forward because it makes it very difficult to approve, incorporate into a T S P and subsequently fund transportation projects that expand capacity. And this is a problem that the City of Medford, that I, that our transportation planner have with this rule. And that is it disproportionately affects, or differently affects, communities that are growing. So if you look at Portland Metro, if you're the City of Milwaukee, for example, you're not growing. You're surrounded by other cities and you're not going to be expanding very much. You're not going to be building a bunch of new roads. And so there's an example of this that I'll talk about a little bit later, but Foothill Road, for example. But if you have a growing community like the City of Medford, and the City of Medford is growing, we did that U G B expansion a few years ago. Almost all of that land has been brought into the city, is now going through its land use entitlements, zoning, things like that, and actually being developed. And if you develop land and you have more people living in that area, you have more businesses, you are going to have more congestion, you're going to need more transportation facilities, you're going to need more roads. And this rule makes it more difficult to do that. One good thing that happened in the, back in November when L C D C met is that they did postpone implementation of Rule 0120, which I think would have been very challenging for us. So we're glad that that has been postponed, but we don't know what the final sort of disposition of that will be. Yes, sir.
So Matt, the information that you're giving us is really disturbing because it's telling us that the state of Oregon is directing, keep growing communities like ours in spite of the fact that our population is going to be growing. They're telling, this rule will require that we constrict and restrict vehicle travel in spite of the fact that our population numbers are going up. Now, I remember when you did your initial presentation about, about a year ago. If I remember, I think it was, it was just about March or April a year ago that you did a Zoom presentation. And if I remember right, the head rulemaker on the committee for D L C D was a gentleman named Evan Manville. And Evan Manville was an anti-automobile activist, bicycle enthusiast that they recruited from Seattle to chair that committee. Is that, am I correct and am I remembering it correctly?
I don't know what his background is. And actually, he's not the project manager for it. That would be Bill Holmstrom. But he, he is very active in it.
He was the gentleman that D L C D selected to make that part of the presentation last year.
Yeah, maybe, it could have been. I've presented on this so many times, I have really lost count at this point.
But the point, the point that's important to me is, based on what you just said, the testimony that you just gave, is that even for growing communities like we have in southern Oregon, this rule says, growing or not, you have to reduce vehicle miles traveled. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It is. And we previously had, in this same rule here as a region, there was a limit on how much vehicle miles traveled per capita, important to remember, per capita, how much more you could do. And we had difficulty meeting that. We learned that during regional problem solving, and that's the nature of this region. You know, we have these cities, they're all kind of spread out. People travel from one place to another to do daily kinds of things, like go to work, go to school. And so we, we travel a little bit and that's just kind of the way it is. And that's why during regional problem solving, we came up with some things like creating these activity centers that were going to be mixed-use walkable kind of areas. All of the cities, the six cities who ended up finalizing regional plans along with Jackson County, agreed to do that. So we had, like, done a lot of this stuff before, but we had done it through a process that was local, that involved like 10 years of meetings and back and forth and give and take. And that just personally, to me, is another problem that I have with this rule. When this region had on its own done something that only one other region in the state of Oregon has done. We went through regional problem solving, everybody worked together, and we came up with these rules that had some of these same goals in mind. And all of that stuff is kind of, you know, I guess irrelevant now or not as relevant as it was. Yes, sir.
Well, I'm not sure I'm disturbed because I don't really know what this rule says. And that's what I'd like to know. And just for the record, I wouldn't be on this Planning Commission except Rick Holt, who's not with us any longer. But he got me on this Planning Commission and I remember his, one of his agenda items was always to have a train between here and Grants Pass. And of course, that was never anything that happened, but he always hoped for that. And I'm not sure what this rule is. So that's, I'd rather talk about that than that the governor's dictating to us and stuff like that. I mean, I understand that. But what exactly are we expected to do if the lawsuit doesn't stop this?
Yeah, and we'll go through all of those things. So that's the first part of it. And the way that transportation planning will be done in the future, T S Ps are going to be a lot more complicated. They're going to be more expensive to do because of different performance measures that will need to be adopted into transportation system plans. And that's a significant consideration for local communities because it's not as if cities, counties, and the state of Oregon are flush with money for doing transportation planning. The state has committed itself to funding transportation system plans. Medford is going to need to update its transportation system plan, which we just updated with the completion of our U G B amendment in 2018. We will have to update that beginning in 2025. So we'll restart that whole process. And I would expect that it will cost, you know, a couple of million dollars this time around to do, which will be significantly more. And it's, it's also going to require a lot more staff time in long-range planning at the local level. And these are problems that the state recognizes. However, it, it's been difficult to see where the money is actually going to come from. So aside from ODOT pledging money toward T S Ps, there hasn't, and in doing studies and consultants and things like that, there hasn't been a lot of movement on funding for staff capacity at the local level. So I'm going to move on now to Section 300. Section 300 is really important because it lays out what is sort of one of the core central features of the rule, and that is the establishment of climate-friendly areas. A climate-friendly area is really, it's something that, you would know it if you saw it. It is like downtown Medford. It's mixed-use, it's walkable, it's a kind of, it's kind of a traditional downtown area where you're able to do a lot of things without a car. Because, and this is kind of getting to Commissioner Bennington's point, the rule doesn't work, it doesn't achieve its reduction in greenhouse gas emissions if people don't change the way that they, they travel. If people don't get out of cars and we don't reduce that V M T per capita. So that is, I think, a central assumption of the rule, is that V M T per capita has to go down. And so single occupant trips, things like that, have to go down. And in order to do that, the rule requires cities that are affected by the rule to establish climate-friendly areas. And the climate-friendly area has different kinds of features. It has to have a minimum residential density, you know, there are some other things that you can, cannot do, have in a climate-friendly area. But the most significant part of this is they have to be large enough to accommodate 30% of your population in 20 years. And so for the City of Medford, that's a big number. In 20 years, you know, we'll have 110, 120,000 people in the City of Medford. And our climate-friendly area or areas have to accommodate 30,000 to 40,000 people, 15,000-plus dwelling units. Well, in downtown Medford right now, you know, we don't have a lot of dwelling units. We don't have a lot of people living here. The idea that we are going to be able to have 30,000 people living in downtown Medford in 20 years is unrealistic. But that is the way that the rule works in establishing how large that climate-friendly area has to be. Yes, sir.
I'm really puzzled because working from home and the internet and all this stuff has kind of reduced trips already. And I don't know that that's been taken into account. But my question is, if you look at downtown Medford, it isn't exactly full. So how do they expect all these new communities in these new urban-like areas to fill with businesses that people will walk to?
So that's a really good question. And one of the questions that came up during rulemaking, and a lot of the jurisdictions asked the same question, was, you know, has D L C D performed any kind of market study to look at whether or not it's realistic to assume that that kind of development is going to occur? In the City of Medford, we've worked a lot in supporting development in downtown. We have a public-private partnership that's just around the corner, on the corner of Holly and Eighth Street. It's a lot of money. It's expensive to do and it's costly for the private sector. So in markets like Medford, for example, it's, it's not like developers are beating down our doors to build a five-story mixed-use building. And that's what needs to happen, in my opinion, in order for the rule to work. So that could happen in the Pearl District. But even other parts of Portland, I don't know that that's necessarily realistic.
Well, and it is, I don't mean to interrupt. It isn't happening in Portland. I go there quite a little bit. And Portland is spreading out as quickly as it can in its suburbs, in lots of apartment buildings and such as that. But they're all exactly along the railroad corridor. And we don't have anything like that, of course. We don't have any density like that. We don't have, our bus system really is marginal at best. So I don't know how we compare to any of that.
I think that that's a really good observation in that with public transportation, you need public transportation in order to make the rule work. But again, not all communities have the same public transportation system and really the kind of area that is supportive of public transportation. Because it's one thing to run buses all the time, you know, here and there. But if they're not carrying people, then that's not going to change anything. So it's with public transportation and development, it's always this chicken and egg sort of situation where you need the density, you need the people living in a place served by public transportation, but then you need the public transportation to get them to live there in the first place. And that's a really tough thing. These are all really complicated issues and they were addressed through a rulemaking process that the significant part of it, the part I'm talking about now, happened in a year. I mean, really less. If you look at, it was October when they first started talking about the land use and other rules that I'm going to talk about in a minute. And it was March when they went to their first hearings. And that's when the most significant part of the rule went through rulemaking and when I got involved. Because I don't think any of us realized that it would have such sweeping implications for the way that we do development. So. So that's climate-friendly areas. And the City of Medford has filed its Climate Friendly Areas Report, you know, have looked at downtown. It's a good candidate for it. We're never going to accommodate 30,000 people there. And quite frankly, I don't know that we would want to when you consider what would have to happen. I mean, we have existing buildings. We have great historic buildings in our downtown. It's part of, you know, our history here. And we would be required to demolish all of those buildings and build the Pearl District in order to house all of those people. So we will be looking at other areas in addition to downtown in order to meet our, our requirement.
So Matt, I just wanted to confirm something based on the testimony that you just provided. Is that this indicates to me that regardless of which metro the jurisdiction might be in in the state of Oregon, that the rule applies not proportionally, but exactly the same. So for instance, here in Jackson County, where we have about 230,000 people and about 2 million acres, we have a density of about 80 people per square mile, you know, give or take. Multnomah County, on the other hand, has a density of 1,700 per square mile. So we're about 80 per square mile density, they're about 1,700 people per square mile. And yet, the goal of this rule is going to be administered exactly the same regardless of density. Is that correct? Am I hearing that correctly?
Yeah, it is. Now, in defense of D L C D and the rule, there is a flexible pathway toward compliance with climate-friendly areas. And it's based, it would be based on whatever you came up with that is acceptable to D L C D. So in other words, you would do a market study, you would figure out how you could actually accommodate, you know, your, your 30%. And then you would be able to designate a C F A that way. I think at the end of the day, though, the expectation that we're going to have 30% of 110, 120,000 people living in C F As in the City of Medford is just, it's just not achievable. So, I mean.
I agree.
I don't know exactly how that happens. Without another U G B expansion where we designate that as like, this is the way that's going to be built. And we assume that that's going to happen and the developers are going to follow.
Do they all have to be in the same, can you split them up?
You can.
Okay.
But you have to have a primary C F A that, that is kind of a minimum amount of that. And it's a minimum size, there are standards for the dimensions of it and things like that and what's kind of inside of it, which makes downtown the natural fit for the City of Medford and probably most cities in Oregon who are going to be doing this. But a lot of those cities have like, you know, they have an existing downtown. And it's difficult to imagine, you know, even a city like Eugene being able to pull this off.
I, I want to let you get to the end of this thing because it's really important. But the key part that I hear, you know, this is all about vehicle miles traveled. We have a very rural county, you know, again, density less than 80 per square mile, 230,000 people, 2 million acres. And we have, we have a county where many, many people live far away from the urban, urban central core. And the natural consequence of everything that you've described is that we're actually going to be removing parking from a city where most of the people that wind up in the downtown city area have had to travel to get there. So are we, are we looking, I'm just going to ask you a question if you know the answer to it. In compliance of this rule, is the City of Medford actually going to have to be removing existing parking infrastructure to comply with this rule? Will there be less parking? Will it make it even harder for people traveling into the city core to find parking, to go to their businesses, to shop, to go to school, to do all the things that they do? Will there have to be less parking, less vehicle accommodation to comply with this rule?
So the short answers are no, yes, and maybe. And it's a good segue into the next part of the rule because the next section of the rule is, is about parking. So there are no more questions about climate-friendly areas?
I do, I have a question. Who decides? Who decides whether the city has complied with the rule? In other words, you know, while you're going to develop areas and so forth, to comply with this rule, who reviews that and approves or disapproves of it?
So that will happen through our regular local land use decision process. We'll designate a climate-friendly area in our comprehensive plan. The rule has been revised to now only require that we kind of depict a boundary for that. It doesn't have to be its own separate element or component in the comprehensive plan. But we do have to show that boundary. And so, that's a land use decision, legislative, in our case, land use decision, that goes to Planning Commission for a recommendation, City Council for approval. And of course, as, you know, you all know, land use decisions in Oregon can be appealed. And so, yeah...
So as a practical matter, would Josh LaBomard show up at a hearing and give DLCD's position and then that gets into the record and so forth, and then it goes up the chain that way?
Yeah, quite possibly that's the way it would work, depending on where, how they felt about what we were designating.
Okay, I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, in regional problem solving, we approved a very large expansion area for talent, which would be light...well, it would be commercial, like office parks and stuff like that off of North Phoenix Road?
Over the city of Phoenix.
Excuse me. I said talent, yes, Phoenix. PH4, I think it was.
Five, yes.
Or PH5, yeah. Is that going to have to change now because of this rule? Or is that sort of development still on the table for Phoenix?
I would say that that's still on the table. And fortunately, Phoenix got their UGB amendment done before the rule took effect. Because the rule does affect the way that UGB amendments will be done in the future. But that was all finished. Actually, I started working on that when I was the planning director of the city of Phoenix more than 10 years ago. And that's done. So that should be fine. I think the thing for the city of Phoenix and the city of Medford is that both MD5 and PH5...I mean, I can't say this with 100% certainty, but they...the development, the build-out of those areas that was planned through regional problem solving will rely, I think, pretty significantly on completing, at the very least, an overpass, an extension of South Stage going across High 5 and Bear Creek, if not an interchange. And we're...right now, the city of Medford is working on a study with ODOT, and we'll know the answer to that question in less than a year. And then, of course, we have to come up with, who knows how much money to build it. But that whole process, once that process is done, we'll have to adopt that into our TSP. And that will go through this new process of review where, again, it becomes more difficult, more costly. And going back to what we were just talking about, it's something that could be appealed by who knows who. So although the expansion is done, the actual development within that expansion area, I think is open for debate, so...
It'll be interesting.
It's always, yeah. It's always interesting, yes.
Does Jackson County have any direct obligation under this? And specifically, I'm thinking of the urban area in White City. Does it have any obligation to do any planning in this respect?
So that's a great question. And in my notes, I was...no, but we can go ahead. So White City is not affected by the rule. I think there's some unincorporated areas, unincorporated urban areas further up north, like Marion County. There are parts of Salem that you think are parts of Salem, and they're not. They're unincorporated Marion County. I think there are some areas up there that are affected by the rule, but White City is not. And Jackson County, by and large, is not directly affected by the rule. As I said earlier, you've got...the next time you update your TSP, it's going to go through a different process, and it's going to be more difficult to do. But the other area where it does affect Jackson County is in instances where, like the city of Medford and Jackson County work together on transportation projects. So Foothill Road is a great example. Foothill Road is, you know, it took a two-lane facility, it's expanding it to five in our portion of it. And of course, you have the county portion of it, which is straightening it out and making it more level because we had a ton of accidents and, you know, way too many fatalities out there.
They quit right where the accidents happened.
Okay. Well, hopefully, it'll be an improvement.
Cause and effect.
So if it's difficult for us to put those facilities into our TSP because they're creating more capacity, and capacity, you know, increases vehicle miles traveled per capita, then that makes it difficult for the city of Medford to coordinate and cooperate with Jackson County on regionally significant transportation projects, which is like something that we need. We need to be able to continue to do. Because going back to what I said earlier, this is a growing area, you know? Growing pretty quickly, actually. 1.9% average annual growth last year for the city of Medford. So that's another area where there's an indirect sort of impact for Jackson County. But now, getting on to parking, if no one has any more...and you can, we can come back and talk about climate-friendly areas more later. But parking's a big one. And I think this is a real significant change in the rule because never before has the transportation planning rule directly addressed how parking works at the local level. And so, to get to Commissioner Bennington's question, the rule doesn't require cities to remove existing parking. It does require us to change our regulations so that you could, as a private property owner, convert existing parking to, say, like a building site. You have a...Walmart has the huge parking lot. They're not using, you know, 25% of it most of the time. They could potentially split that off, and they do this around the country. Split that off, turn it into an outlot, put a discount tire or something like that on it. So it doesn't require us to remove parking, but it requires us to adopt policies that potentially reduce the development, construction of parking in the future. And so, right now, the city of Medford is trying to determine how it's going to comply with this rule. The easy way to do it is to eliminate parking minimums, required off-street parking minimums citywide. That brings you into immediate compliance with the rule. And then, there were some options that jurisdictions were provided, all of which are sort of different kinds of difficult to do. And we're right now determining which path we're going to go on. So there are parts of Medford now where there are no minimum off-street parking requirements because to comply with an earlier part of the rule, you had to eliminate minimum off-street parking requirements for development that is within a half-mile of the center line of certain high-frequency public transportation corridors. So for example, you know, Route 10 is one of our high-frequency public transportation corridors. So there's no minimum off-street parking requirement for development along that corridor.
Where is it?
So Route 1099.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And a couple of others. So there are other things with the parking regulations. We have to have rules about how we design parking lots. I'll get to the kind of impact of that in a minute, which, you know, which I don't think is insignificant. But the idea is to reduce the amount of parking that's available in the future, which makes it difficult to drive, which discourages driving, and that's the way that whole thing works. I mean, there's no if, ands, or buts about it. That's how it's intended to work in order to reduce travel and to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Sections 500 through 700 talk about planning for pedestrian, bicycle, and public transportation facilities. The implications here are, for example, when Jackson County goes to update its TSP, you're going to have to do a comprehensive inventory of bicycle and pedestrian facilities in Jackson County outside of the cities. And, you know, more than anything else, that's a cost issue because it is not cheap to do that. So changing, you know, how we do transportation planning in the future. Section 800 talks about planning, design, construction of streets, state highways, et cetera. And it's kind of interesting, in this part of the rule, that ODOT is treated a little bit differently than the local jurisdictions. They're not necessarily impacted by the rule, per se, the way that local jurisdictions are. So they don't have the same constraints, restrictions that we have to deal with. And this is also the part of the rule where there is the required test for capacity-adding facilities. So if you add a lane, I mean, this is really what it comes down to. If you take a two-lane facility and you make it a four-lane facility, a five-lane facility, you have to analyze that in a way that we never had to do before. And I think, as all of you probably know, it's not cheap to build roads. And this is an additional cost to building those roads. Finally, Section 900 looks at how we monitor, how we report to the state. We're going to have to do minor reports to the state and a major...every year, and a major report to the state, and I forget what the frequency is. But a lot of these things have impacts on my staff. And so, it's either we add staff, or more likely, we just take time away from other things that we should be doing, that we'd like to be doing. Yes, ma'am?
Is the restriping of East Main a direct result of these, or was that something else?
No, that was before. That was actually in the TSP.
I just want to be on the record that we didn't have anything to do with that. Can't go anywhere in this town without being blamed for East Main. Okay, I was just curious about...
Are you talking about the restriping of East Main?
You know where the chess pieces are and people double-park and it's...
Downtown, you mean?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We didn't do that. That was not us, just...
Well, certainly wouldn't have been us.
Who did do that? Never mind.
It was the city council.
All right. So there were some recent changes to the rule. I kind of alluded to this earlier. When LCDC finalized the rule, we had a temporary rule, then we had a temporary permanent rule, and finally, we got the permanent rule when they came here, actually, the city of Medford, and met. And at that meeting, they made some changes. They were modest changes, but changes that were good. I mentioned earlier that Section 120 has been postponed. That is the section that would have required us to model the transportation impacts for all of our land use decisions. So rezonings, partitions, land, you know, subdivisions, site plan review. And the problem with that is that we really don't know how that would work. And they don't know how that would work. This question of transportation modeling is something that the state of California struggled with for seven years before they implemented a similar kind of rule. We were trying to do this in, like I said, they, you know, two years, but really, a matter of six months. And it's going to take a lot longer than that to figure out how we can do transportation modeling to measure the effects of a land use decision, you know, a change to a land development code or something like that on transportation. And so, that's put off for a while, and we'll have to see what happens to that. Okay, so moving on to how this could affect Jackson County, I've already kind of talked... yes, sir?
Yeah, so are we still talking about the park...I mean, you're finishing up the parking part?
If you have questions about parking...
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so parking, our TSP, these things are very impactful to citizens, again. You have the people that live actually, you know, in the downtown area of Medford, you have people live in the suburbs. We have a lot of people that live out in the county that commute into the city or between cities. As we know, we have a tremendous amount of commuter traffic in between the people that work in Ashland compared to the...most of the people that commute to Ashland don't live there, but they, you know, many, many work there. Also, same thing, Grants Pass, a lot of people commute from Medford to Grants Pass and vice versa. So this is a very significant thing. So I just want to, I want to make sure that I heard you accurately. So this rule, C-FAC, this rule, the goal of this rule is to make it harder, this is what I heard you say, is to make it harder for people to use their own personal transportation to meet their transportation needs. It is designed to force them into either walking, bicycles, or public transportation. Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, sir. Carpooling or something like that.
So it's fair to say, based on the testimony you just provided, it is fair to say that this rulemaking is designed to force people out of their own personal transportation and into either walking, riding a bicycle, or taking public transportation. The other thing, I want to bring up something that rubs up against this but didn't get mentioned, which is ONA, the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis, which was guidance provided by the legislature. And I have a couple of questions for you.
Yeah.
Is it your...and I know that you've studied this carefully. Isn't it true that ONA provides incentives for compliance and disincentives for non-compliance of C-FAC? In other words, for cities that are complying, that are meeting their goals according to how C-FAC is administered or interpreted, there's going to be incentives for these cities. But for cities that are not meeting their C-FAC goals, ONA also provides disincentives. Is that correct?
Well, C-FAC does. So within the administrative rule for C-FAC, there are enforcement mechanisms...I mean, there are for any of the administrative rules.
So is it fair to say that cities, in other words, cities are being incentivized to force their...through the means of this rule, cities are being incentivized by the state of Oregon through DLCD rulemaking that we're looking at here to force them out of their own personal transportation? Is that correct?
I don't know if I would quite go that far.
Is the net result of this going to force...designed to force people out of their own personal transportation?
Well, the metric is reduction in vehicle miles traveled per capita. I mean, in order for that to work, fewer people have to drive as far, fewer people have to take as many trips.
So it's fair to say that?
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's indirect, but that's how, that's what kind of has to happen.
In other words, if you live in White City, and let's say you have someone that works in your office, your office is downtown Medford, downtown Medford, so they live in White City where property prices are more affordable, housing a little more affordable. So they live in White City, they...the further you get down the road on this, the implementation is designed to incentivize cities to...in other words, it's going to be very, very hard to create parking, and then cities are going to be incentivized to remove parking. So parking is going to be harder to achieve. So for the person that lives in White City that's driving into Medford to go to their place of work, it's designed to force them out of their own personal transportation because it's going to be harder for them to find parking and force them into...obviously, you're not going to be walking from White City to go to work, and you're not going to be riding your bicycle from White City to go to work in downtown Medford. So the only option that's left is public transportation or your own personal transportation. So the net result of this is going to be forcing that person out of their own personal transportation. Is it fair to say that?
It is designed to discourage driving.
Yeah, thank you, Matt.
And the way that actually ends up working is anybody's guess. So only a few other communities have eliminated mandatory minimum parking requirements citywide. Very few. Most, you know, you might find it in places where they've eliminated parking requirements in parts of the city. The city of Medford does not have a mandatory minimum off-street parking requirement in its downtown. You'll notice that there's abundant parking, and it also has not had the goal or the outcome of inducing a lot of new development, unfortunately. So if we eliminated off-street parking requirements, probably, the private market continues to produce sufficient parking in most cases. It's the cases where it doesn't, I think, that concern most people. And that's why there's so much controversy about eliminating minimum off-street parking requirements. It's the bad actors that scare people. It's the bad actors that, that, that scare people.
You, you said before, but I, they're muddled in my mind. What are the units of measure for, for parking? Fewer trips per capita, something like that, you said?
Well, overall, the rule, the goal is to reduce vehicle miles traveled per capita.
Vehicle miles traveled per capita?
Yep.
So as the population increases, at some level, travel can increase.
Right.
And has anybody ever looked at that to say, what kind of population increase do we need to continue doing what we're doing now, or something like that?
So that gets back to that whole issue of how we model and how we, those are kind of the assumptions that we put in to the model. And no, you know, I, I think, so Southern Oregon has its own transportation model now. It's a first for the state, and so we really don't know, you know, how it's going to work. And that's at a regional level. When you're talking about a specific development, we really don't know how it's going to work. And so to answer your question, there's a lot we don't know about it, a lot that we need to know in order to know if any of these interventions, reducing parking, you know, making public transportation more, more available, if any of those things would actually reduce vehicle miles traveled per capita.
And the people who want to make the rule don't know any more than you do.
They don't. They don't actually do that work. You see, at the state level, that's the job of the Transportation Planning Analysis Unit, which had not really been, as far as I know, very closely consulted during the rulemaking process. And so again, I'm glad that that part of the rule has been postponed because we need a lot more time to figure out how that's really going to work.
But postponed doesn't mean abandoned.
Correct. Currently.
Matt, I'm just going to make one last comment on this parking thing because this, this is really important, really, this is really important stuff. You, you might have someone who lives in Ashland and works in downtown Medford, might be a professional person.
That would be me.
That, that, that professional person, it, they, they may be able to find a workaround, but the larger the cohort is of those people that have to commute from where they live to where they work, becomes very problematic when it comes to the use of, of public transportation. Here is where I want to say to you, want to relate to you, a situation that I'm aware of. White City, we all know that White City is where generally the most affordable housing, especially the most affordable new housing in Jackson County is available. And so we see Jackson County, we see a lot of population improvement there in White City. But those pity, those people, there's very, very few jobs in White City, so this is a bedroom, is what we call a bedroom community, and you, you know what I mean when I say bedroom community? The vast majority of the people that live in White City have to commute. So they find affordable housing there, they purchase the housing, but then they have to commute. The idea that all of these people that are living in White City are all going to take public transportation, that all need to get to work by eight o'clock, you know, five, five days a week, is, there, there's no scenario that makes sense for that, number one. And the other, and number two, the other thing that's happening is, on the, on the parking end, is that because those people are all parking-dependent, there's not a lot of shopping out there in White City, there's not a lot of support services, so all the people that live there in White City, where our affordable housing is, they all have to commute just, they've got to commute to get their kids to school, they've got to commute to go to church, they've got to commute to go to shopping. Everything they do involves commuting if they're going to live there, in the most affordable area that we have to live. Some of these, some of these dwellings are now being converted into two-family setups because of economic necessity. So you might have something that was originally built as a three-bedroom, two-bath, you know, multi-story, and now, instead of one family occupying that dwelling, you've got one family on the first floor, and you've got another family on the second floor. Both of these families have the same commuting needs, which means parking is already at a premium, and the implementation of this rule is only going to aggravate a problem that, that is, it's going to aggravate something that's already, already a problem to the level where it's going to really negatively impact these families. How are they going to shop? How are they going to get their groceries? How are they going to get their kids to school? How are they going to get to work? These are problems that are not addressed by CFAC as nearly as I can tell.
Yeah, and that's actually one of the things that I addressed in my, probably most of my testimony during rulemaking and then subsequently during, during the hearings, is the part of this rule that is supposed to deal with equity. And, and in my opinion, that's missing to a large degree, in part because of that issue. The assumption that lower-income households are the households that take public transportation, I think is something, again, that not a lot of thought and research went into. And if anything, if, you know, you have a lower-income household, both parents are working, you know, you have to get kids from, you know, point A to point B. If you've had school-aged children, you know that schools aren't daycare, even though we're asking them to be more and more, and you have doctor's appointments, you have, you know, lessons and extracurricular activities. It's really hard to do that stuff just using a bus system that is not ubiquitous, that doesn't go absolutely anywhere. It's very difficult. And so, you know, I've always questioned for that, for that reason and others, whether this rule can actually be applied equitably. And you probably can gather from my tone that I don't think it can be the way it is right now.
I think you could make the exact opposite case. I think you could make, make the case that the impacts of this rule fall heaviest on those on the lowest end of the income. If you have the professional that's working downtown, he doesn't have to take his own personal vehicle, or he can take an Uber, he can take a taxi, he can, you know, he, he has, he has options because he has the finances that will support those options. The people on the lowest rung of the economic ladder, they do not have the, the economic vigor to look at these other options. They either drive their own personal transportation, or they're stuck using the, the bus, on whatever that bus travels. So...
Yeah, and this, this gets to the...
This, to me, is just, is just extremely problematic and very punitive on the people that, that need transportation the most in our rural county.
Yep.
I have a question, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Did any of, and it sounds like maybe this is going to fall under the section that was postponed because it's modeling, and they don't even know how to do their own modeling or whatever. But is, has there been any conversation about the fact that we're a growing community? We did our UGB, we're doing Foothill, but they're, they don't want us to be widening more roads? And then we're in, of course, the situation of dealing with, like, all the seismic stuff that we have to do, and egress and ingress and all this for emergencies. But I know that in Portland, in the Portland area, there's like absolutely shut down any additional capacity, so they're not doing any new lanes. It sounds like that's what they want to do here. Has there been any conversation about the idling of vehicles that comes along with not having enough capacity for the population? Like, it's, I've sat stop, stop dead in Portland, and that doesn't seem particularly efficient. So is that, has that been taken into account at all? Like, the additional, and, and also me driving around in circles in downtown Medford looking for a parking spot because it's raining? Like, has any of that been kind of...
So, yeah, that's, that's, that's a good question. And again, there's a kind of a disconnect between the goal of actually reducing greenhouse gas emissions and what is thought to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And that issue of idling, for example, I think is a really good one. Not only idling, but out-of-direction travel. So if there aren't direct connected routes, which we have to construct over time as the community builds out, which we sometimes have to retrofit, you know, into, into our community, and everybody loves that, that if you don't have that, then people are driving all sorts of different ways to, you know, and out-of-direction travel is more vehicle miles traveled per capita, is more greenhouse gases emitted, et cetera. So, no, those things weren't taken into consideration. Salem, Salem Kaiser and Eugene are going to be doing a thing called scenario planning where they can kind of look at different ways they might meet the greenhouse gas reduction goal. And, you know, we did that sort of experimentally here through the Rogue Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization. And the single biggest thing for us was converting our public transportation fleet to landfill gas. So there, maybe in the future, there's a potential for actually looking at policies that might actually work, but that is not in the rule.
So that's why you guys are doing Foothill. It just dawned on me. You're doing Foothill so that in a couple of years, you can road diet Foothill and get an attaboy for reducing. Does that make sense?
I hope not.
I thought it was for Cascadia.
I think we'll leave Foothill the way it is, probably, once we're done.
Sarah brings up a really good point, I think. We have, I don't know how many, but we have many intersections in Medford that the signaling just seems to have gone to crap. And, and we sit, and I, I go out at four o'clock in the morning every day, the same place, and we sit at, at traffic signals at four o'clock in the morning. I mean, it's just stupidness. So does anybody now care about all those signals? And I know the state controls some of them and this and that, but that seems to be a huge problem to me with all, you had 100 cars idling out by, by Delta Waters.
So the signaling, if it's our intersection, that's on us, and that's something that we would look at. So, but if it's ODOT, it's, it's ODOT, and we can talk to them, but, but that's all we can do if it's, if it's ODOT. But, yep, just call up the city of Medford.
Oh, I don't, no, no. I'm not going to call them and complain. I know everybody's doing the best they can. It just seems like we sit longer than we used to unnecessarily.
Yeah, I mean, if there is a spot where that happens, though, really, you should let us know because, you know, we need to, we look at the timing, but we can't be everywhere, and the traffic engineer, you know, does not routinely check all of those intersections. So we kind of depend on people to let us know what's going on.
I wondered, and I don't mean to prolong this, but it always says, you know, everything's being disrupted now in one way or another, that's kind of the code word for things. Why hasn't anybody, anybody disrupted the traffic signal system? It seemed like it could be way better.
Well, I, yeah, I don't, I don't know. I'm not the traffic engineer, so...
I will say, I, I think you, it's, it's better downtown with fewer traffic lights. Well, that's an attaboy for me and I...
To take those out, yeah.
I'm here every day.
Yeah. I will pass that along. That will be appreciated, I'm sure. Thank you.
Mike, we've been at it for about more than an hour now. I suggest we take a break. Come back in about 10 minutes. I see some people squirming, so might be time to do that and stop some of the digression and carry on with your, your presentation.
I don't, I don't have much more to go, so...
Okay. How, how much more do you have?
I, I'm really at the point of wrapping up.
Oh, let's do that, and if we can hold it, and...
Yeah.
Take a break after your presentation.
We've talked about most of the stuff that I wanted to say at the end already. Implications for Jackson County, the city of Medford, you know, we're, we're linked together, so what happens in the city of Medford affects Jackson County, the, you know, part of it that, that you oversee. One thing that you will be looking at as you're approving site plans, things like that, in the unincorporated Medford UGB, the rules that have to be adopted to address parking, things like that, we'll be looking at those applications when you send them over for us to review as well. And just, you know, wrapping up the lawsuit, I don't have much to report. We haven't heard anything new. It's still with the Court of Appeals, and they did review it quickly. They put it on sort of the fast track, but we haven't heard anything since. So unfortunately, I don't have anything new to share with you on that. And, and that's it. That's all I have.
Before you get away, the governor suggested that urban growth boundary additions be expanded willy-nilly for one time. Is Medford eligible for that? And I guess the real question is, even if that passed and became a law, is that something that could be implemented quickly?
And would we qualify, just taking a real, you know, quick look at it, I think that we could. They do have some, I mean, it's pretty limited. It's just an urban reserves, non-resourced land, and, and exception land. You know, we have all three of those, but urban reserves, the big one for us. And then there's an affordability kind of qualifier, that's one thing that we would have to look at a little bit more closely. I'm pretty sure that we still meet that. And then it's down to infrastructure readiness, and we do have parts of our urban reserve that are, you know, they're ready. I mean, there are subdivisions on the other side of the urban reserve, on the other side of the UGB. So, yeah, Medford could probably do it. Ben's really pushing for it. They have a huge area that they need to get done, and so is Hillsborough. You know, the other metro communities, I don't think are supportive, I could be wrong, but, and I don't know where the other cities fall on it right now, but it's gotten tons of opposition. And just to put it in perspective, 150 acres for the city of Medford because of the size of the city of Medford. Compare that to 22, 25,000 acres in our UGB. This is a one-time expedited process, you can only use it once in 10 years, and then the, the law sunsets. So it's 150 acres. That's it. And there are affordability requirements on it. I mean, you know, this is the first time this law, or a law like this, has been taken seriously, and with all of the compromise that local jurisdictions are going to have to do as a part of Senate Bill 1537, I think maybe that this is part of the give and take. And, I don't know. I'm supportive of it. I hope it passes. But who knows?
Would, and I don't mean to continue this very long, but would the building community embrace that 30% affordable or whatever that number is?
There are parts of that that I think are going to be challenging, because there's like a 60-year affordability period in it. And just, I mean, for, unless you're like the Housing Authority at Jackson County or another regulated affordable housing developer, I think it's hard to wrap your head around how that's going to work. I think you could do it. I think you could probably partner with somebody like Housing Authority or some other affordable housing provider and have them manage that part of it. But I think for a lot of, you know, private sector, for-profit housing developers, that's something that's definitely not super attractive, I guess. Not, not one of the best parts of it. But if it gets it done, it gets it done, and we'll figure it out.
Thank you a lot. I appreciate your coming.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you very much for having me. It's, it's been since 2018, the last time I was here, talking about the UGB, so happy to be back. And anytime you have questions, happy to come over from across the street.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Let's take a 10-minute break, come back and continue on with review of the legislative law requiring land development ordinance, LDO, text changes. So come back at about 20 after.
Boy, more exciting stuff. Yeah.
We still have to, uh, still is gonna affect us. Uh, the one thing, and then last, just a comment on it is, uh, you know, they say if you build it, they will come. But if you zone it, that doesn't mean they're gonna build it. Uh, there are things that are, you know, the water table, uh, landslides, slopes, soil conditions. The way CFEK works to get your twenty-five dwelling units per acre, you're not gonna be able to do it with the parking and everything else that there were. If you have a parking lot, you have to have bicycle stalls that, uh, have charging stations, you have to have solar panels, you have to have trees. So they're actually taking some of that real estate out at effect. It forces builders to build up. And the two points I'd make on it out is geological conditions in that particular site may not be conducive to it. And the second point on that is with the affordable housing shortage that we had, if it penciled out for builders and developers to do this, they'd already be doing it. Just because you zone it and say you have to do it, what you have the potential of doing is taking these climate-friendly areas and actually make them undevelopable, developable, because it doesn't make any financial sense to follow these rules, so. There's my, uh, there's my two cents on my soapbox on that, so.
Well, well done.
There has to be a reason for the growth in population, and I don't see it, you know? It's, it's, it's demand-driven, and if there's no jobs that are calling for people, I don't know why we're gonna do that, now get there, how are you gonna get there?
There was, remember, I don't know how many years ago now, somebody wanted to, to buy the airspace above the parking lot across from the library and build on it.
Alan Sandler.
Yeah, which seemed like a great idea to me, and I don't know what all the ramifications are. But that's, that's kinda goes contrary to what you're talking about, I think, in that that probably is a place where it would work to, to go up.
Yeah, I, you know, I can't talk about specifics. I'm talking about gen- generalities. But we do have a lot of issues just from the building perspective on whether you can build anything. Uh, but it becomes really expensive and really problematic uh, when you have to factor all the other site conditions into it. And the fact that, uh, development community, uh, is a great community, but they don't do it for free. It's, they're not charities, uh, they have to be able to make some money on it. And if they're not gonna be able to pencil it out, then even if they could build it, why would they? Because it becomes too expensive. And, you know, and the point on that is that it, you now have this zoning on something that says this is what must be built or how it's built there to achieve these goals. And it's not gonna happen. So what you've actually done is actually taken that area out of something that would become developed. And that is my soapbox sermon on it, so, you know. All right, so moving on to the next agenda item, which was the legislative stuff. What I'm not gonna be talking about today is, uh, any of the current bills that are out there. If you have any questions, I could maybe try and give you an answer on some of those. What we're talking about here today are bills that, or the may bills, which are different than shall bills. Shall bills are, it is written in a legislation and we shall do it. May bills are, we're, the legislature says, we may do this, which means that we have to make a legislative change to our land development ordinance. And these are some of the, uh, bills that we need to decide whether we're gonna do that may part of it and actually put it in our, uh, LDO. Some of them, I, I believe are, uh, parent, I, I think that the, the commission may want to, uh, but that's your prerogative. So there's four bills here. Three of them, uh, have not got before the board. Senate bill, the last one on the list, Senate Bill six forty-four is the ADU bill. That one has been initiated by the board because it went directly to the board uh, because of so many folks that want to be able to use this provision. And that bill is the bill that says that you can build an accessory dwelling unit, uh, if you have a residence on a property, just outright if it's a residentially zoned property. There were a lot of incarnations of that bill. That went back to twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen when the first ADU bills came out. Uh, not gonna go into whole history of it, but, uh, it was in the UGB, it was outside the UGB, it was in, it was back in the UGB. There were a lot of, uh, a lot of things that, uh, were problematic with the way the language was. The biggest problem that, uh, we had with that was that it was tied to the, uh, to the infamous, uh, wildfire mapping. The original seven, Senate Bill seven sixty-two, where they decided that they were gonna create this wildfire map. We all know that that, uh, doesn't exist right now. They're in the process of trying to remap that. But it tied, uh, it tied the ADUs to the state wildfire map. So tying it to the state wildfire map basically did not allow us to, uh, to implement the bill because we had our county wildfire mapping, and that was not gonna be good enough. So that one has already been initiated, so I just wanna let you know that that's out there. You will be seeing a staff come to you with recommendations on what that looks like. Right now, we're exploring the, uh, how this is gonna work inside the UGB versus outside the UGB because right now we have urban growth management agreements with the cities, and the cities have ADU, uh, requirements of their own. Uh, specifically, how do we make this, uh, hopefully a type-one review and still do the noticing required as required by, or UGMA, but not necessarily required by the fact that it's a type-one.
Hey, hey, uh, so, so Ted, you've lived with this for a long time. For the people that are listening in, can you just give a practical example of, of what this would, would look like? So a, a dwelling at, just make up a fictitious address and just, just give us a real quick example of what this looks like?
What it does look like as this bill is written is that any residential area, uh, would be allowed to have an accessory dwelling unit.
So, so, so.
Accessory dwelling unit is living, eating, sleeping, cooking. It's another dwelling.
So let's say you're out on Coleman Creek Road, you've got an RR five piece of property, you've already got a dwelling on it, and?
You'd be able to build another dwelling. The parameters in this bill as it writ- is written right now is that it couldn't be any more than nine hundred square feet. It would have to be within a hundred feet of the primary residence. Uh, it wouldn't need to meet the fire hardening requirements. Uh, what was unique to six four, Senate Bill six forty-four was it allows to use county mapping in the absence of, uh, state mapping, and it also mandated that, uh, either way, it would require the wildfire hardening. Uh, so loosened up some restrictions there. Uh, it can't be used in conjunction with, if you had, already had a second residence on the property, that maybe it was non-conforming or it couldn't be used in conjunction with something like an RV or temporary medical hardship.
And you couldn't sell it?
You couldn't sell it individually, but it would be part of the property.
Couldn't, well, I'm, what I'm thinking of is some smart guy would condo and sell the airspace inside of it.
Uh, no, it's, it's specific that it can't be used as a short-term rental.
And you need two acres.
That wouldn't be a short-term rental, that would be sold.
Well, to answer your question, no. I'm not sure that the specific language is, uh, in there that talks about condos and airspace. Uh, but it'd certainly be something that we should probably explore when we bring it back to you.
Oh, I'm, I don't care, I'm all for it, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, that, the thing about condos is, uh, it's more of a legal term than it is so much, uh, planning because you're selling that airspace, uh, and that's the contract that you're, you're selling the airspace, not so much that you're building the, the accessory dwelling in it.
So do you see us here as a planning commission hearing any approval? Presentations from ADUs?
Yep.
It's a type-one.
Uh.
Planning application, so would we hear it?
You'd be, you wouldn't be hearing the planning applications, but you'd be hearing staff coming to you and saying, these are rules that we recommend, and if you agree, recommend it to the board, then.
With the policy, uh, language?
Yeah.
Not, not hearing individual cases?
No.
That's internal staff that we wouldn't, we wouldn't participate in.
Yeah, and that's part of that may shall thing. Uh, we'd be writing it into our LDO that we do allow this in the county. And that would be your role to help develop those rules, what that text change would be.
So can you put in, I, I guess I haven't been paying attention. Can you put in a separate septic system for this accessory dwelling?
The way the language is, uh, written, uh, you'd be able to tie into your regular septic system as long as you got approval from DEQ.
What if you wanted to put in a new one?
I don't think, I think that would be up to DEQ, I don't think there's anything that would.
There wouldn't be a, a restriction against that?
No, no. I mean, and it might be a viable option if somebody has a septic that, uh, DEQ says, you know, can't handle the.
Well, there are, you know, septic systems do have restrictions on them for, for feet of the building or whatever.
Exactly. So if, if it, it was either not big enough, uh, they can either upgrade or more likely put the second septic.
So that, that's not restricted, though?
It's not restricted by this legislation. I don't know if any of that would be restricted by DEQ because, you know, part of that is, you know, do you have a, do you have the area to put the septic system in?
Yeah.
Perk and, you know, which in this county, no, but.
So is there any pending applications from county residents to do, uh, ADU?
Not pending in the sense that they have an application in, but we've had a lot of interest. Uh, and as soon as we can get this through, uh, I'm sure we'll see a bunch of applications.
So Ted, I, I don't mean to belabor this, but I will a little bit. It's, can't be used as a rental, is that right?
It could be used as a long-term rental, not a short-term rental.
Okay, that's, so that was my issue.
Yeah.
You could rent it long-term, but not as a B and B, what do you call that?
It would be considered a dwelling like any other dwellings, so if you have a house and you want to rent it out, you can rent it out. You just can't turn it into a B and, or.
So I could go live in my accessory dwelling and make an Airbnb out of my house?
Yeah, as long as you live, as long as you live on the property.
Ted, Ted, there, there was an acreage limitation on, on, on that, is that still there?
Yes, two acres.
Two acres, so.
You have to have at least two acres.
So if you're at one point nine acres, no bueno, but if you're two acres, you're great, or greater than, this is eligible?
As the legislation's written, yes.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Is that, that's not true in-city limits, though?
No, and that's part of where staff is looking at the difference between inside a UGB and outside a UGB. Uh, inside the UGB would be going by the city standards because we have no standards except for White City for ADUs. So, you know, if it's built in Medford UGB versus Phoenix's UGB, they may have differences in their size or, you know, how close or how far from the primary residence.
How do the county's rules work for White City?
I would have to look those up. We don't see a lot of ADUs in White City, uh, which is kinda surprising. Uh, I know, put it this way, uh, White City is the only area in the county where ADUs are allowed right now. And that's because it's the unincorporated city.
Do you think part of it's because nobody really knows about them yet?
I don't know. Uh, it, it, I guess it depends on how much space you have and, you know, whether it's practical or not. Uh, yeah, I, I can't give you a good answer on that.
You mentioned White City, what about places like Rouge or Prospect? Are they, uh, when you, when you refer to White City, uh, are we also basically treating those places the same? Or are they just completely out there on their own?
No, uh, Rouge and those places are all under county.
Right.
Ordinance. White City has its own chapter that, you know, deals with, uh, standards for White City.
So does the county have special rules for Rouge?
No.
Or, and Prospect is an incorporated town, right?
No.
Oh, it isn't?
No.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Utte Falls is, I think?
Utte Falls is, uh, Prospect isn't.
Is not, huh? Yeah, you bet.
Yeah. So, yeah, and they would have their own planning rules up there.
So in Prospect, that would just fall under the county rules?
Yes. So that's the one that's in motion. Uh, the other one's Senate Bill, or House Bill twenty-four sixty-nine. This was actually from twenty nineteen. Get my right paper here. Yes, this was from twenty nineteen. This is where the county may approve a new single-family dwelling unit on a lot or parcel zone for forest use. So resource line, forest use. Uh, the caveat on that it would have to be for, uh, family member, there would have to be irrevocable deed restrictions. Some of you on this, uh, commission may have seen this already. This was one of the things that we were trying to include in the revisions to our resource chapters, uh, for farm and forest. Uh, we had a grant that was given from DLCD for an outfit out of Portland to help us rewrite those chapters. Uh, I know the commission spent a lot of time on this, uh. I'm just gonna say it bluntly, the outfit out of Portland did a very poor job. Uh, staff spent an awful lot of time on it, but it meant that, uh, things got divided up among staff. Uh, after it went through, uh, the planning commission, the county council took a look at it, and there were some discrepancies that didn't like, inconsistencies, I should say, more than discrepancies. They were things like, was it a house? Was it a home? Was it a residence? Was it a dwelling? They wanted some of the language to be more consistent. Some of that was driven by the actual legislation itself, and that's the, which, when we got something that has legislation, we try and use the same language that's in the legislation so that there are not different interpretations. Uh, but the point of the matter is, uh, it never moved forward. But this is one of those bills that we are allowed to implement. A recommendation from the planning commission last time was that we include that as part of the chapter, uh, three and four rewrite. Um, but we're gonna bring it to you again in this piecemeal fashion to get it into our LDO. Uh, so that's one of the bills out there. The other ones are Senate Bill two eighty-seven. This was also a bill that was part of that same, uh, process back then, and it had dealt with breweries and treating breweries kind of very similar to what wineries were, uh, allowing them to have things like tasting rooms. Uh, and then the last one is Senate Bill, uh, ten thirteen, and this one is from the last legislative session. This is from twenty twenty-three. And this would allow a recreational vehicle, uh, to be used as that, basically as an ADU. Uh, there are some provisions in it, uh.
Doesn't that have a sunset clause in it?
No, not that I'm aware of.
I thought that, I know that, that was one of the amendments that was, that was proposed. I, I can't remember if that amendment got incorporated or not.
That was, uh, you might be thinking of the RV allowances that they had out after the wildfires to, uh.
Correct.
And that had a sunset provision on it. And we also had a local ordinance to that effect, what has a sunset provision. This one would just allow an RV, basically as you would be allowed to have one if you were in a residential, uh, area.
In per- in perpetuity?
Yeah.
Wow.
It does, uh, have a section in there that talks about being able to use it. Uh, that the county or the local jurisdiction could require reasonable appearance, repair, inspection, and sighting standards. Basically getting into a maintenance code on these, I guess. Uh, there's another provision in there that the vehicle is not subject to the building code. That was actually something that came from the Building Officials Association that is basically said hands-off, we don't wanna be dealing with, uh, RVs. Don't call them a dwelling. Uh, they're still an RV. If you wanna allow them to be used, you can, but they're not building code.
Uh, so can, can you give us a practical example of your understanding of this in application? In other words, so here's a parcel out in the county, you know, it's, it's out on West Griffin Creek, it's on Coleman Creek, it's on Wagner Creek, it's, it, it's, it's wherever it's out on a piece of property. Somebody either drives or drags one of these things onto a piece of property and begins using it as, as a dwelling. Where, where do we go from there and what, so how, what, what do we do with that?
That would be all and what we would bring back to the planning commission on whether you would want to recommend this as, uh, something that we consider because it's back to the may shall. But to your question on what that would look like, I think you had a pretty good description of that. Somebody would drive it on, drag it on, uh, and say, this is my second dwelling. Uh, I mean, what we would look at, uh, you know, if you chose to take this to the, to the board, uh, what we would be looking at is, at that point, what are the sanitation? What are the electrical standards that we might impose upon this? It does allow us to talk about appearance and all that. But, uh, your point's taken, yes.
Well, I think it does say you need wheels to roll it on and roll it off rather than dragging it. So it has to be portable, I think I read that. And it also doesn't require septic since you can have holding tanks and clean it up every month or so whenever you need your tanks emptied.
Yeah, the definition of a recreational vehicle as it pertains to this bill says it means a recreational vehicle that has not been rendered structurally immobile.
Right.
And is titled by DOT.
Has to be streetworthy and, uh, transportable.
Yeah, so, I think you went.
Oh, go ahead.
So this is something that we don't have to do?
No.
Okay.
The, the purpose of bringing these bills up is, uh, do we take them to the board and what's our order of priority?
Does the planning commission get to initiate that process or?
Well, the idea was to bring this up as also part of our, uh, BLC, uh, JCPC joint meeting where we, you could present to the board and say, these are things, some of the things that we should work on for our work schedule for the next year. Back in January, I had brought to you at least a draft outline of what we thought was coming your way. And like I said at that time, some of those things, we don't really have. We don't really have, say, if somebody puts an application in and they wanna do a, you know, subdivision, it's as the application goes through and that's how it ends up on your calendar. Things like this, you can recommend, you know, to the board. It's like, we think this is a good idea or a bad idea, and this is the priority that we think it should go in. And John?
So this says that it has not been rendered structurally immobile.
Mm-hmm.
Which doesn't mean necessarily that it's rotable.
No.
I might, I'll, I'll move right on from that. And that it's titled, but not necessarily currently licensed.
True.
So, so is there, and, and I've kinda read down through the rest of this. I think it does have to be connected to some sort of the sewage disposal system, and I don't think a holding tank qualifies from what I read here, but I don't know that.
I didn't see that specific, yeah.
Is there any way to, 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 um, make the rules a little bit more strict? There, I'm, I'm privy to some places where people shouldn't be living that they are. And, and I don't know that the county should condone that.
Yeah, I, I agree with all of the above.
So can, can some other, and I don't know what I'm talking about.
We, we, we.
Some rules be, be made?
We would be able to come up with our, uh, our rules, everything from the appearance to the maintenance to the structural issues that you talk about for these RVs. But then you have to consider a couple things. One, it now becomes code enforcement issues if they do not maintain these things. And do we want to, you know, at, at this point now, we have allowed somebody to use them as a dwelling and then later come back and say, you're not keeping this place up. What do we do? Kick them out? The second thing is, the sanitation is, is a good issue, at least from, about a good issue. A good issue to bring up to, 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 uh, talk about is because RVs that have holding tanks, you generally put a chemical in those holding tanks to get rid of the smell. And what you do at that point is you are getting rid of the bacteria. The problem is, you now take that and you dump that into your septic tank. The bacteria is what's, eats all those products, and you are now killing them. So there's some things there that are not planning-related, but they are certainly things to consider, and I don't know where, you know, I don't think DE, I don't know where DEQ would fall on that.
I'm, I'm wondering if there's a different way to look at this, and, and that's why I said about currently licensed. I think if, if it was a rule that it had to be currently licensed, that would be a big deterrent for a lot of these things. Because the, I'm not sure they can even be licensed, some of them, titled.
Yeah, right now, the county ordinance is that you can have an RV, um. and you can even have somebody stay in it, but no more than thirty days at a time and no more than three months in a calendar year. Or the last provision where you can use an RV is if you're building a house and you want to stay on site, you can be there for nine months as long as you already have your your permit for your house. So that, we do already have allowances. This bill would just make it if they wanted to use it as a dwelling full time.
So do the the current rules put any restrictions on the quality of the of the RV itself?
No.
Would this give the county more tools or fewer tools? Do you know what I'm saying? So because there are there are provisions in here. It does open RVs up to long-term rentals, which is interesting. But then they have to be, it says the property owner will provide essential services as described in statute. And we can require that they register the use with the county. So like like John said, people are doing this. So does this give us more tools to say, hey, this isn't registered with us? You need to go through, jump through through some hoops?
Yep, possibly, yes. The if you choose to move forward on this and recommend it to the board, you know, the two things, A, what priority and B, do you even want to recommend it? That's something that the board looks at. All the questions that you're asking, they're definitely real concerns and they would. If we choose to move forward on it, that would be something that we'd have staff look at and take a look at it and say, we address the things like licensing.
Isn't this a big, huge can of worms already? I mean, there are RVs everywhere.
Yes, it is. It is a code enforcement issue now. Well, the one, here's here's a soapbox thing again for you. I believe, and this is only my belief, I have nothing to back this up other than think about it, is when they were looking at affordable housing and they talked about dwelling units. They initially called these dwelling units, and that was where some of the pushback and said, these are not within building code and they were not dwelling units. They were never meant to be dwelling. If you want to allow them, that's a legislative thing. That's up to you. But it was also in affordable housing where there were so many dwelling units that were supposed to be created within the next couple of years. If they call them dwelling units, then I guess they count towards a dwelling unit and not an RV. So math on that made it couldn't possibly make it look like there were more dwelling units created than actually were. And you, and I'm sorry, Brett.
Yeah, go ahead.
I guess the last part of that is, you're right, they're everywhere. So now if somebody has one and they were using them illegally and they want to come in and say, hey, I'm allowed this now. We have magically just created a dwelling unit where there was one, somebody living in it already.
So following up what you said, and to me, this, what I'm gonna say now is very, very important is as somebody who signed the front of a check in the building industry for over three decades, the building construction industry, especially when it comes to dwellings, is one of the most highly regulated in the entire United States here in the state of Oregon. Siting a dwelling, we've got the strictest land use laws in the United States here in the state of Oregon. We have one of the most restrictive energy codes in the in the United States here in Oregon. It is, it literally is, is it's one of the most difficult places in the world to create housing right here in the state of Oregon. And now we're gonna say, okay, if you don't want to require, if you don't want to comply with all these really restrictive land use codes and all these really restrictive construction codes and all these really restrictive energy codes, I have good news for you. All you have to do is go buy a used RV for ten thousand bucks, drag it onto a piece of property and call it a dwelling and you're and you're good to go. This this makes no sense as as a developer and a member of the developing and building community. I tell you, this makes no sense at all because first of all, it doesn't, it's all you're doing is is you're saying, well, all of these other codes that all the the serious builders have to comply with for for what? For public safety, right? We're only gonna let you live in this dwelling because the state of Oregon, by means of its building code, its energy code, its planning code, and this plethora of all these other codes that apply for your safety, now none of these apply anymore. All you have to do is drag this aluminum and southern pine-built contraption onto a piece of property and live in it. And now and now we're gonna call it a dwelling. That that makes absolutely no sense at all.
So I.
So getting getting back to what I thought I heard you say, so Senate Bill ten thirteen, this is a may adopt if the county wants to, but you don't, but you don't have to. And 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 my my question is, is why in why in the world would anybody want to visit this kind of disaster in the making on their county? It just makes no sense at all.
Okay, so first off, I don't disagree with anything that you just said. But my job here is to bring you the bills that we may adopt. And you can make the recommendations on to the board, whether you think we should pursue the may because we're allowed to do something or not. I am not advocating for this. So when you ask me questions on what's in the bill, I can tell you what's in the bill. That doesn't mean that I'm advocating for the bill. It just means you get to decide for all the reasons that you just stated, and some of my own soapbox reasons that I stated, on whether you want to take this to the board and say, don't think about it, or you should consider it, but you're right. I am I am also a building official for the county, as you know. So I am very much a proponent of we have codes for reasons. They were reasons because there was usually some tragedy involved. So somebody wrote some code and the codes expand over time, over time, they get bigger and bigger and the volumes get bigger. But you're right, an RV is not not regulated by the building code. And that was one of the reasons why when it first came out, the building officials said, stop calling them dwellings. They're not dwellings and they, we don't regulate them. Keep us out of this.
You know, I have.
Go ahead.
My major concern, I guess, is the definition of what an RV is. People are gonna abuse that, I guarantee it. They're gonna stretch it. They're gonna say, well, you know, fifth wheel can be forty feet long. Some of those are pretty large. You can you can get a mobile home, you know, which is not an RV, I guess you're not calling it that, and put cite that on your property and call that an RV. Or one more wrinkle to that is I'm gonna get a shipping container that's sixty feet long or forty feet long, put an axle on it, call it an RV, and and look what the county is gonna look like in thirty years with that sprouting up everywhere.
If you if you look at the what an RV is that comes out of the language on building an RV, you can build your own. So some of the some of the things that you are saying there.
But can you title?
I could possibly see somebody trying to get that registered as an RV and.
But can you title a shipping container with ODOT? I mean.
There are rules, yeah.
Like, it's not just any old box that you put on your property because it has to be titled with ODOT, right? So there, I mean, there are some limits.
But if you look at the definition of what could be considered an RV.
Yeah.
People can make their own. They don't have to be made in a factory and as long as they.
Trailer with a box on it.
Right.
Have the legal people looked at this? Because even if you don't call it a dwelling and you and you you say you can't call it a dwelling, you you call it a a used for residential purposes. So I don't know what the difference is really. So what happens when somebody burns up in one of these things and comes back on the county and says, you authorized this as a as a dwelling, as a as a residence? I mean, I'm I'm not a lawyer. I'm just curious if the legal people have looked at it and said, okay, we can live with that.
I don't think a lot of people really looked at this bill very closely at all.
Are we allowed to talk about it in in substance, or are we kind of going out on a limb?
Yeah, as far as we're not talking about actual rules that you might be looking for the text man. We're talking about the merits of whether this would be recommended that the board look at or not look at at this point. So I think we're okay in that context.
So what, a double wide mobile home qualifies as an RV?
Uh-uh.
No.
Because it can't be it can't be titled as a RV.
Vehicle.
Yeah, it would already be, you know, registered as a manufactured home.
There's that gray area between, you know, single wide and a and a fifth wheel that's a lot larger. And if they both travel and have licenses on them.
And they would be, there are regulations outside of our our ability to.
Mobile homes.
They can get it titled as an RV and, you know, good luck.
Okay, two, several things. A school bus would be a good example of a homemade RV. And you see them around more and more as dwelling units. And you are, we've been talking about the the increase in the population of the county. And it, the look of the county does somewhat affect economic development. I mean, you can go to the Jackson Wells Springs, and I think that's a good example of where this might lead us. It isn't a good look. I would be more serious in considering this kind of thing if we got rid of the complaint-driven model of code enforcement. For starters, I realize freedom is important and I'm curious as to why Senator Lythicum sponsored this. But if there is, if we have complaint-driven code enforcement, people are gonna live and let live and you're gonna see half-mile-long extension cords to who knows where and and dumping your waste from the RV is gonna be interesting. All you have to do is turn on the valve and it goes out and, you know, nobody's gonna want to complain.
That's happening right now.
It's, yeah, I mean, we've got it. Why do we want more of it, substandard?
The question is now it's not legal. So if we put more parameters on it and it's licensed through the county, then the license could could, the registration could be revoked, I assume, if they fall out of compliance with whatever rules are put on this. I just, I don't want to take away a tool of the county by accident. So I guess, do you think that this would be easier for staff to regulate if they had these rules rather than like Commissioner Tiroff was saying, it's all complaint-driven and then you have to go out and it's lots of contact and all of this. But if you're on a registry and you fall out of compliance, then your neighbor calls and says, hey, this guy's not complying with his registration, then you, does that make it easier? Or does that make it harder to deal with?
We could revisit our LDO section that talks about RVs now and possibly put more restrictions on that. What this bill is doing, though, is saying that you are just allowed one outright and really no restrictions.
Can I add one more thing? If you want to see how bad things can get, let's just all remember when people went crazy over air quotes hemp three years ago and you had people sleeping in barns and all of this kind of stuff. And everybody lived and let lived because you can, you know, if your neighbor is dumping waste from an RV and you can smell it, you still might not want to complain because you might get shot. And I'm just saying, it's it's ridiculous. You know, to consider this kind of thing and in fact have a system where nobody gets sanctioned for anything unless their neighbor hates their guts.
I think that's exactly right. Given the need for housing regardless of its quality and given that we're playing whack-a-mole, I think, if we do anything about it, because these, literally, they're everywhere. I think we ought to just leave it alone. Just not deal with it.
Yeah, also, you know, in addition to what Commissioner Elliott just said and something that Commissioner Tiroff Tiroff said, which is important, he talks about looking down the road. Here's what we know. What we know is that the long-term value of an RV goes down always. Like whatever your purchase price is in two thousand twenty-four, by two thousand thirty-four, it's gonna be, it's gonna be substantially lower.
My airstream is worth almost exactly twice what it was when it was new.
That's because it's your airstream. Give it, give it, give it, give it to my cousin and I guarantee it'll be worth half. So 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 the thing is, but we know that conventional site-built housing goes up somewhere between five percent, nine percent. Back in the nineties in in Ashland, it was going up an astonishing twenty-five percent per per year. And what does that mean? This is this is taxable revenue for Jackson County that is, property tax revenues used to be about forty percent of the county budget. So on the one hand, if we encourage and allow the proliferation of of structures that decrease in value and not only decrease in value themselves, but lower the general overall financial value of all the property around them, which is what they tend to do, the long-term consequences of that is gonna be very, very different than if we support our population needs with site-built housing, which increases the property value over time. This is the kind of thing where if you broke it down to the number of occupants per per structure, whether it's a site-built dwelling or whether it's some sort of RV structure, I think that the the amount of economic impact over time would be staggering.
So since the work sessions are informal, is it fair to say, and you will all get to see the, you know, the draft that I proposed when we have our BLC, JCPC joint meeting, it's fair to say that we're supportive of that JCPC is supportive of House Bill twenty-four sixty-nine and Senate Bill two eighty-seven seven being initiated. And Senate Bill ten thirteen, the RV bill that we're talking about, should not be addressed.
I think that's what I'd say.
You you will have your have your chance to, you know, provide opinion at the at the joint meeting. But just because this is an informal work session, I just like.
I'm, no, I don't feel strongly about it. I could make the argument either way.
Yeah.
So I don't, so but obviously the majority is.
Well, it it isn't gonna change anything regardless in my mind.
No.
Whatever happens, it isn't gonna change. And unless, like Dick says, we quit doing complaint-driven enforcement and you hire ten more people to go out and start action against all these things.
I don't want to pay for that, John. That's expensive.
All right, so.
But just to get a feel for one more thing on the farm breweries, it seemed like that was more of a concern in Willamette Valley or somewhere else. You know, there's a lot of microbrews in the valley, but not brew, not not growing hops. And is there any demand in Jackson County for farm breweries? Do we have any?
I'm not aware of anybody ever putting an application in.
I have, I, so that's kind of a.
I think we should do it.
On Jackson County thing.
I want to do that. I care about that. I think we should do it.
I can give you a little insight into that. I know a guy who's very much involved in the brewery, the microbrewery thing. They're going down the tubes, period.
Economically.
We have given up on microbreweries. I mean, not every one of them, but they're going away.
I think the destination ones, though, like in Eugene, Ninkazi and Hop Valley are big destination microbreweries. They're not micro anymore. I think they're still like legally.
Steve Agritourism.
Agritourism. Um, I think that's one of the coolest things about Southern Oregon is that we have all these beautiful wineries to go to. And we have replaced our economy largely with tourism. So I wouldn't want to shut down somebody's ability to to set up a cool, like.
Oh, I agree. I just don't think there's gonna be any demand.
There may not, but I I don't know. If we can do it.
Sure.
I don't want to stop somebody from doing that.
That's what I'm kind of feeling myself too. I just don't know the demand. I don't know of one. I'm not in an industry. But other places, Portland and Willamette Valley, I can see some some interest there. So it may be not a low priority for us to even get about. Why wouldn't, well, I think we should embrace that. I didn't mean not to embrace it.
I'm not saying, yeah, okay.
Because anything that we can get going on rural property is gonna be a benefit, in my-
Right. But it's economically driven, not, not because we want it, we don't zone it and they will come.
Apparently wineries, hardly any of these wineries are commercially viable. People wanna spend their money.
Right.
Cool.
So-
Like raising cattle.
Back to my, uh, earlier point, so fair to say then that we would put House Bill 2469, the second forest dwelling for a relative, as the first priority for initiative, followed by Senate Bill 287 on the breweries.
I think so.
And Senate Bill 1013, you can give your opinions, uh, for or against it, at, at the meeting and whether they wanna initiate or not.
Sounds like it sums up my thoughts on that, but that's my own.
So the next part of this, uh, I know Commissioner Bennington's not here right now, but, uh, to get this on the schedule right now, it looks like the board's calendar is fairly open in March, which is surprising. Uh, sometimes it takes a while to get things on the board. Are there any, uh, there's Commissioner Bennington now. So, uh, Brad, we were talking about best dates possibly. Are there any blackout dates, uh, in March or April even that you would be, any would be unavailable? So we have most commissioners at this joint meeting. They're either gonna be Tuesdays or Thursdays, those are their work sessions. Um, so. All right. If nobody has any, any blackout dates, then, uh, we're trying to find a best first available date for that then.
Mm-hmm. Sometime in March, you're saying then?
Yep.
Yeah.
And then one last thing, uh, just as a general news from the planning department, planning manager, uh, recruitment is out there. Uh, we'll probably start interviewing in the next couple of weeks. We do have, uh, a couple, three candidates that, uh, we're looking at, varying experience. I can't say any more than that, obviously, uh, but we're moving on that and, uh, I'll probably be as happy as you all are to get a planning manager in, so.
It filled sometime this year.
Yeah, you know, last time we looked, it was over a two-year search.
Yeah.
I've talked to our HR department, if this round of applicants, uh, is not something that's successful, then, uh, just start doing an aggressive national search.
Just get the right one. Get the right person.
Yes. Uh, that's why it took over two years last time. There were certainly people that, uh, might've had the technical qualifications, but I'm not sure, might've had the, uh, the county's, uh, perspective on planning.
Are we getting more interest in development or, I mean, like back before the housing boom or the construction boom collapsed in 2009, we were having meetings twice a month and, and it never stopped before noon. And then it went away. Is it coming back or is it pretty slow or is it falling off? How, how is that going?
We are holding steady. Uh, and, and Mr. Commissioner Bennington probably answered this question better than I, but I believe that the builders are still at capacity and-
We're buried.
Yeah.
We're buried.
So-
Anybody that can leave fog on a mirror is busy.
Yep. So there you, there you go. Uh, and there is commercial activity out there, so enough so that, you know, when we look at budget time and I look at staffing, uh, you know, even though we're seasonally down, uh, for the first time and here's some news, you know, also is that we are finally fully staffed in the planning side, planning manager. Uh, but that's the first time ever. Uh, we got pretty aggressive about finding, uh, people, wanted to get them trained over the slower winter months so that when summer comes, they're here, but we're confident, let's talk on wood, that, uh, we're not hiring people that we would have to lay off later.
So high interest rates are, it breaks them.
Kinda like high inflation. At some point, people just get used to the new norm. That's all I have from news from, from this side, so.
Good. I hope all have looked at the, what, January 11th memo about the work plan for 2024. Uh, anybody have some comments now or in the future before the county commissioners' joint meeting with us would be appropriate to inject back into Ted and revise or edit the work plan for 2024. I, I looked at it and a lot of that's gonna be service-driven. When people come in, they ask, we, we, we service that end of it, but, uh, it, I don't, I couldn't add anything more to it when I looked at it critically. So I want everybody to have a feeling they participated in the work plan development and have their, their say. So outside of that, if we're all done here.
Okay. So our next meeting, Patty, and that will be, uh, your chance to talk to Josh-
April 11th?
April 11th.
And that'll be a training session, not a presentation. And then April 25th, we have Goal 11 exception application. That's somewhere in Ashland or something or?
Uh.
Okay, Ramos? Doesn't matter. So two in April and nothing in?
Oh, possibly in March if we can get the joint meetings set up.
County Commissioner.
Mm-hmm.
I have to excuse myself to my next, next meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So we adjourn at 11:22 and, um-
Thank you, Ted.
Meet again probably in March for the, uh, joint meeting between the county commissioners and us.
Thank you.